This conference will now be recorded.
You're welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining our budget session focusing on public works infrastructure. Do we need to go around the room?
No.
Okay, all right. Turn the time over to Jason or Dean.
You know, I don't really have anything to say other than this is Levi and Dean put a ton of work into Josh into this, obviously. And you guys take it over.
Thanks, Jason. Well, happy budgeting. It's good to be with you again for another budget year. As we talked last time, we want to try something a little different this year and have kind of these little mini focus meetings. Talk about public works infrastructure and then we'll follow up with power and buildings and fire and then all those other things. So today we want to focus on public works. And today we want to give you a general sense of projects that are out there. Not all of them, but some that in the next couple of years. We want to talk about how projects are financed in Kaysville typically. And set priorities as we look forward over the next, you know, next budget year and the next couple of years after that. Jason said, we can't thank Cody and Dexter and Josh and Levi enough for the work that they've put together here. They've, you know, taken a lot of information and boiled it down. And we think we've got a pretty good just real snapshot of where we think we are and where we need to be. So as far as the schedule.
Well, first of all, before, hopefully by having this meeting, we can avoid. Keeping with the nature of starting it lighthearted.
These are not in Kaysville.
These are not the ideal public works planning. They're in Laten. Anyway, just.
But this could be in Kaysville. I want to get from the, if it were snowplowing, yes, it would be in Kaysville. Correct. That's how we snowplow.
This is not how we. Anyways.
Anyway, sorry. Yeah. So again, today's public works in about three, four weeks, we'll talk about parks and others. And we'll jump into power and then we'll get the budget packets a little sooner than we anticipated. Departments will have budget packets by mid February and we hope they can get them back to us by March. We'll review those and set up to review them with the departments and then. Larger budget retreat will be April 12th. So that'll be the one where we'll try to put all the budget together. But today we want to focus on infrastructure and public service.
Do we anticipate this being done by 10?
By 10? We would hope so. By 10 or 10:30, we should be done.
Okay, I got an appointment at 10:00, 10:00. So I just need to.
Okay, well, we'll take that into account as we. Okay. So let's go on today's schedule. We want to spend a few minutes talking about expected level of service. And we'll let Josh and Randy, Randy from Sunrise Engineering talk about that. And then we'll talk about financials and then the priority list. So with that, we're going to let Josh kind of talk about experience and. Before that, we're going to talk about the mission statement. Okay. You think this before enhance the present and future quality of community life in Kaysville. Through the delivery of effective, efficient and equitable services.
We're going to beat this in you every time.
Every time we have budget, we're going to show this.
Every time I cross out equitable in my mind.
And then what's highlighted in green is probably what we want to talk about today is capital investment in infrastructure. Trying to stay ahead of the maintenance curve. You know, as we do these projects, we want to stay ahead of just maintaining things. So with that, we went.
Josh. Oh, thank you. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here with everybody. And this last, maybe late November, early December. I started having what felt like a nervous breakdown about projects. And I started stressing internally and then out loud in front of Cody and Dexter. Just about like the sheer volume and as we're looking at price tags on things and what needs to be done, but how. Dexter and Cody started working with each other, kind of independent of any like formal instruction. To start looking at like, we have a good idea of the next one to three years, but long term. What are we looking at and how do we start to start planning more strategically? And understand some of the difficulties and limitations that we're going to be dealing with on these projects. And we've got quite a number of projects. I think there's maybe 20 to 30 years worth of projects that they've come up with. And these are just maintenance, resurfacing roads, replacing water lines that are problematic. And so it's, these aren't any exciting projects of, you know, adding additional connectivity between the east and west. Or, you know, like the connector road that we just did. So they've put a ton of work into compiling projects into coming up with numbers. And those numbers are, you know, the cost of water lines, valves, fittings, et cetera. So I can't say thanks enough to them and then Dean and Levi, the work that they've done. Also can't say thank you enough. So as we started to look at these project lists that they started putting together. The big question was, we're seeing huge dollar amounts. And one of the focuses with Cody and Dexter was we rely heavily on consultants for bid projects. Cody and Dexter were looking for opportunities of, you know, that we're still going to have to use consultants to assist with design components. But what can the city start absorbing more internally between construction management, which would be Cody's kind of forte? And then the coordination and more of the like, simple design aspects that is more in Dexter's wheelhouse. If that's money that we can keep internal and not have to spend as much with consultants, does that help bridge the gap that we'll be talking about? I wanted to talk about a couple of project examples to maybe help frame some context on the discussion. And part of this discussion is there are kind of different levels at which we can do every project. You can do kind of the bare bones, basic approach or hey, while we're here, let's, let's fix and address everything that we're aware of. And let's improve and maximize efficiency. And it comes back to that mission statement. The first project I want to talk about is the Burton Lane Roundabout, which I don't have a recent photo of. But Burton Lane Roundabout to me is a phenomenal example of to what extent do we do our projects? That project started probably four years ago, almost, maybe even a little bit more. In just a simple traffic evaluation of the intersection, we had concerns from the community about pedestrian safety. As well as vehicle speeds, vehicles following the posted traffic control, people going through stop signs. And the engineering study came back and said, this would really be a great spot for a roundabout. But there are some unique characteristics that maybe it would be worth gathering some real data. And that's where we bring in the Lego pieces. And that was an interesting experiment. But it yielded really valuable data and gave us confidence in, hey, let's go spend the money to do this project. With it right next to a park, with it on a school route, with it being one of only two accesses to the west side. And the fact that there's, you know, we've got this blind curve. We have two downhills coming in towards each other. We made the decision internally, we are going to do this, maximize safety, maximize efficiency. But as you look at that project, it is a no frills. The fanciest thing about it is that we stamped the concrete rather than just a broom finish concrete. There's no landscaping. There's no like, welcome to Kaysville signs or anything like that. So it's interesting to look at Burton Lane. If you ask public works, you know, what level did you guys do Burton Lane at? That is the gold level. But you can look at Burton Lane and be like, that's, that's the gold level? Sorry, Mayor, I cut you off.
Sorry, I was just going to, and you're probably going to get to us and say, how much did gold cost?
Yeah. So a gold cost between the utilities, between the roundabout, the paving. Having to restore the property impacts to the park and some of the surrounding neighbors. When we factor in the design as well, the project, the construction, I think we're like 1.1, 1.2. Bring in the design and all the studies and internal staff costs, we're like 1.35, somewhere in there. So again, that's, that's kind of the, we're going to do everything. We're going to address ADA concerns. And potential deficiencies. We're doing it all. And when we leave there, we want to, this is as good as anything we can do. But admittedly, it has zero aesthetics to it. There's, there's zero fanciness to it. And that's difficult for a lot of people. But that was a decision that we made internally. But as we continue down this list, we, we're going to be talking a lot today about water projects. And that is replacing water lines, underground utilities. These are largely pipes that are 60 plus years old in this old part of town, east and west of Maine. But it's also areas where we have ferric soil, so high iron content, high water content in the soil. And we're seeing places where subdivisions that are 20 years old, the water lines are disintegrating. We have bolts that we pull out of water leaks that are halfway eroded and just like disappeared. So when we're doing water lines, the question becomes, okay, similar to Burton Lane, how can we, how can we reduce costs? And still try and maximize whatever we can. There comes the question of, all right, well, if we're coming in front of somebody's home and we're going to tear up half the road to redo the water lines. A lot of these places, the pavement is in poor condition. So while we are there, do we increase the amount of time that we're inconveniencing these people? And increase the project cost and resurface the entire road while we're there? So we've done that places like 300 East several years ago. Replace the water line that we're having issues with, repave the entire street. Or do we take an approach like we did on 150 South, probably six years ago? Where with budget constraints, we couldn't afford to resurface the whole street. So we just repaved the trench itself. And there's, there's pros and cons to both, all things being equal to us. If we're in somewhere, to us, it's a target of opportunity. If we're here, we're going to inconvenience these people. Let's leave it looking amazing afterwards. Let's, let's add some extra funds. Let's add some extra time and walk away from it looking great. And we don't need to come back and address things for quite a while. But it certainly keeps costs down if we just focus on the water line itself. So another example of, you know, level of expectation. Do we take the extra time and money or do we just do the bare minimum? Burton Lane is, we're talking about bare minimum. That we could have saved 1.35 million dollars by spending $2,500 on additional signs and make it a four way stop. But what you would likely see there is an intersection similar to Mutton Hollow in Fairfield. Where you have massive backups in morning and PNP commute times. You have people avoiding the intersection and going through adjacent neighborhoods to avoid the backups. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the different levels there. The last project that we want to talk about as an example of to what level do we do this project? It's not just informative, but it's also, we need council's input and direction on how we proceed. And I think this not only applies to Crestwood. I think this is input that we'd love to be able to apply to our approach with all future projects. One of the items that Dexter and Cody have worked on since November is engaging with Randy Smith from Sunrise Engineering. And Randy is incredibly engaged with, you know, city and state agencies. Has a very good kind of read on projects throughout the state, the funding. Quite a number of things that has been working really closely with Dexter and Cody on, you know, what, what things can I help Kaysville? Start to learn and perform internally to help with, with that cost saving. The, the main function of Randy being here though, is let's talk about Crestwood. Let's talk about, we've identified this project. It's a, it's a very large, complex project. And Randy's going to kind of walk through the process as we started the initial design. And have moved through that process, identifying opportunities, identifying potential issues. And what those things mean for the cost of a big potential project.
Thank you. Levi, did you happen to get that spreadsheet? If we could maybe ask that. Which one of these do you want to look at?
If you'll just put up the full design for that, that would be a great one to have. And then did you receive the spreadsheet by chance in the separate email? If you did, that would be helpful. Thanks for letting me here. This Crestwood Road project, we were engaged with Josh and Cody and Dexter several months ago to help look at Crestwood Road. Crestwood Road, on its surface, when we first started in on it, they gave us a list of criteria. Here's some of the things that we're wanting to improve with Crestwood Road. And this project essentially spans from the cemetery at about 300 East, right? And goes all the way up to 89 with the new crossing and connection there at 89. So it's roughly about 1.2 miles of roadway. And as we got into it, the intent was for us to prepare a construction, a set of documents for construction. So that the road could be reconstructed with a full depth reconstruct, replacing water lines, sewer lines, storm drain. And then looking to add in components such as multi-use trail, fixing a lot of the issues that are through there. As we started in on our analysis, as we started to solve one problem, then others started to emerge. And so as we got into this, what we have, what we're presenting to you here is if you look at the full design, which I believe is package five, and I apologize, my numbering got a little off my printer. Or actually, sorry, five is the cemetery. It's going to be set four. I apologize. So four is what you're seeing up on the screen with the full design there. And then the spreadsheet that you see, that represents, in order for the city to have the best long-term roadway for the best, that would solve every single problem. It would upgrade your aging infrastructure with water, sewer and storm drain. It would fix the ADA and non-compliant issues that we, that are, that exist along the roadway. It would fix the safety issues that we face around the 700 to 800 East area. There's a downslope and a curve that go on that causes enormous traffic problems. Yeah, I think it's the third or the fourth curve. Yeah. So there's that curve through there. And, and so looking to solve all of these right there on the far east, the far right-hand side of the sheet that you see there.
And just for a little bit of context there, I think that's Brookshire. We probably see with the police department anywhere from six to 12 traffic accidents there in the winter alone. Vehicles going too fast as they're coming downhill. So that was one of the questions is we have a number of issues. We've, we've had a fatality here in the last five years. And although it's related to improper speeds, is there, is there a need? Is there a, an opportunity to address that here while acknowledging that that comes with significant cost impact?
So as we got into solving all of the problems and creating the absolute best solution, the spreadsheet represents what the cost of that project would be. You can see in the $20, $24. So on the single spreadsheet that you've got there. Feel free to rummage through these later and then use them to warm your hands and as you light them on fire later. But the spreadsheet you'll see in $20, $24, in order to bring this roadway to a wonderful compliance state and create a roadway that will genuinely last decades for the residents. We're looking at approximately a $19.8 million cost. Knowing that this roadway wasn't going to be constructed this year, but that it was anticipated in future, in future years because of the existing projects that are already queued up from a budget perspective. We, we projected those costs out to 26 and 29. And you can see that in 29, which is a likely scenario of when this roadway could be constructed from a potential budget solution. We're approaching a $27 million, $26 million cost through there. And of course, those are based on inflationary reasons. So there's some guesswork in there on inflationary numbers and the cost of goods over time. But we are relying upon a database that is literally decades old and tracks costs of these materials. And it's possible that this goes out to a contractor and depending upon the ebb and flow of materials, that those costs could be plus or minus. But these do have some contingencies built in there. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get the spreadsheet over to Levi and I can project if we want to from my screen. But what we've taken as we presented this information to Josh Dexter and Cody and we said, okay, we're looking $27 million. I think that there was several cardiac arrests that occurred in the room because of the current budget and the allocation, the annual budgets that are there. So we then started taking a look at a modular approach of saying, okay, well, what are the priorities of the city? What are the priorities of this project? What would we prioritize that we could spend on? And this spreadsheet, and I've emailed it over so, so they can forward it out to you and you guys can play with it all you want. But this is the full design. This is the absolute best case scenario that would present the best roadway for the, for the citizens of Kaysville. However, we could take a look and say, well, we only want to address the cemetery parking and that's one of the exhibits. And if we were to only address the cemetery parking only, well, then the project comes down to roughly three quarters of a million dollars. And I'm not sure that all of the exhibits made it over to Levi. So I apologize. They might not be up on the screen. But there is a cemetery only parking exhibit in your packet here. It is number five. So one of the, one of the items that they said is if we only did the cemetery parking, that's three quarters of a million dollars. And that's obviously a more realistic budget number that could be achieved, but doesn't really solve the problems of this roadway. Because once you get into the cemetery parking, then we talk about pedestrian crossings and ADA accesses and signals and, and that type of stuff. And then it evolves into, well, what about the multi-use trail? If we're going to improve the parking through here, we want people to be able to get here. And so is the trail a priority? Well, if we did the trail only, the trail only is another three quarter of a million dollar project. And that's for the entire length of the project. So then you say, well, do we do the trail and the cemetery parking? So we were able to take a modular look at this in the spreadsheet that you'll get emailed later and that you have access to. The city can take a look at it and say, okay, well, this is what our priority is. Is our priority to solve the safety? Is our priority to solve the non-compliant issues? Is our priority to upgrade our aging infrastructure? I mean.
So is that spreadsheet like a plug and play?
It is. Yeah. And if you want.
It's got a developer tab.
Yeah. So essentially what it is, we've programmed it over here where you can click on full build out. It gives you the $20 million price tag or if you want to do trail only or the cemetery. And then it's got sliders. If you want to do the trail plus all of the water lines and the sewer lines and it adds those things in. So I apologize if I'm not able to project that up there. But you can take a modular approach. But no matter what modular approach we took, there's still a budget issue. And so we've been working and staff has been great to give us direction. And we've been trying to provide them information of answers to say, okay, here's your absolute best scenario. And here's what really should be done, but is that achievable? And if it's not achievable, then what budget dollars do we have and what can we do with that? But one item spills into the next. If we're going to only do the water line, because that's a safety concern from a contamination standpoint or an aging infrastructure standpoint. Then you may as well do the milling fill as well, because you're going to create a trench to tear up the water lines. And like Josh was saying earlier, if we're already going to inconvenience the residents, let's try to do it in the minimal fashion. Otherwise, you're going to do a water line one year and then a sewer line the next year, and then a milling fill the next year.
And a little bit of context there, that's a similar approach that Davis County took a number of years ago with Mutton Hollow. They broke Mutton Hollow into, I think like a three-year project where it came through one year. Gas company did their work, replaced their, their gas lines, repaved the trenches, opened it back up. The following year, Mutton Hollow Water Improvement District comes in, replaces their water lines. It's, it's torn up all summer, but they repaved, opened it back up in the fall. And then the following year, Davis County came in, added sidewalk and repaved the entire road. So it was three years of shutdown all summer long. And that's, that's obviously impactful to the people that live there, but it's also impactful that people could use that to commute from point A to point B. Randy talked about a lot of the, kind of our priorities. And what, what are like, what we would consider, if we're doing anything, we've got to do this. Down to, you know, it would be phenomenal if we could do this to maximize safety or efficiency. And then we can talk more about those things. But as we're, we're reviewing this with you. Our hope is to be able to get input from the council on, all right, you know, do we. This, this active transportation component, the trail, the multi-use trail, that's a huge focus within Davis County. As well as the region. WFRC has been hired by Davis County to put together kind of an active transportation plan, a comprehensive plan for the entire county. And one of the major focuses of that group is we have a lot of great north-south connection on trails in Davis County. But there is very little, especially in Kaysville, there's zero east-west connection. So do we establish this 10-foot multi-use trail that takes those users, pedestrians and cyclists out of the roadway? And then increase safety. So there's, there's those kind of components. So it's just a little.
I think it was asked this to Andy from the WFRC over in Davis County.
There, there's a lot of options and, and I think we can talk as, as the presentation goes on. We pursue a lot of grants. WFRC, the legislature, Davis County. We, we have a grant currently from UDOT on this project. But grants are far, that we have that we're using, but it's a, it's a $1 million grant. And that's, that's helping with the, the designs, kind of keeping that moving. Yeah, we need quite a few. So those grants are difficult because they are out there. Everybody's competing for them. They're far from a guarantee. But that's one thing that Dexter and Cody have been working with Randy closely on is let's, let's position Kaysville a little bit better to be more successful and also finding out about opportunities that not a lot of people know about. But.
And this one doesn't include anything with Fairfield and Crestwood, right?
Correct. Yeah, this stops basically the west side of the cemetery. So it's focusing on the section of Crestwood that doesn't have full curb sidewalk. And that has the oldest and probably most susceptible portions of water line. And that's, that water line is probably the driving force behind this is, that is old. It's asbestos. It's probably similar, maybe a little bit older. It's asbestos concrete. So we have this and 200 North basically serving as the two arteries of water to the rest of town from Highway 89. So everybody in Kaysville receives water either from Crestwood or 200 North. And we had major concerns about those water lines in both of those roads. That's what started us looking at Crestwood. And not that we don't care about vehicles or pedestrians, but all of the curb and gutter and resurfacing of the road was secondary to.
So that's your priority, the water lane?
Correct. So sorry, Randy.
No, you're just fine. I think that's about it. Just to provide a little context and background. My group, we do this statewide for several municipalities like Josh had mentioned. We do this type of work for UDOT. We do this type of work for counties. We do this type of work for cities. And that has helped us to dial in these prices or at least give you a really great idea of what these prices are. And your staff has been really great to work with from a very big picture perspective of saying, okay, how do we, how do we modularize this? And how do we prioritize that? And that's really what's led us to here today is needing some advice from council based on budgets. On what should we prioritize on this project? And then we've provided, as Josh indicated, and for later discussions or as much as you want, to talk about potential funding sources that could aid the city in helping to bolster your budgets on an annual basis and a regular and a consistent basis.
Those are, it, I just want to be clear, as we pursue grants, like I said, we've, I think we've successfully. Those are, I just want to be clear, as we pursue grants, like I said, we've, I think we've successfully obtained and utilized probably close to twenty million dollars in the last seven years on projects with roads. That can include water, sidewalks, pavement. But that's a fraction of the projects that we've done in that period of time. So they will certainly help kind of take the edge off somewhat. But we're still going to be looking at projects where the lion's share of the cost is going to be coming from internal sources, from Kaysville City Funds.
And it's no surprise to anybody that projects don't get smaller and projects don't get cheaper year after year. And so being able to project and plan ahead, the staff has really been focused on what can we do to help grow that, to keep this, to keep a minimum maintenance level, to keep the infrastructure where it needs to be, type of thing. And how do we keep up with those costs on an annual basis?
So as we talk with council, I guess first, with Crestwood, are there any questions from council for Randy on this project, on some of the work that they've done?
Is the cemetery parking, like, I mean, do people typically park outside? Every time I've ever been in the cemetery, people park in the road, along the road inside. Is that an issue or?
No, I think the times when you see the most amount of parking outside is Memorial Day, Veterans Day. If you have services that are being conducted closer to Crestwood. But the discussions we've had with the Parks Department is, hey, you've got this giant gravel shoulder. While we're working here, do you guys want to pursue something? And Cole said, we would love to add additional parking, but also just beautify the frontage along the cemetery. So again, that's just one of these components of, are we gonna go for it? Are we not?
And to add to that, it does actually enhance the safety component. When you have an ADA compliant issue and you have some safety with pedestrian issues, by improving this along the frontage of the cemetery, while it may have minimal usage on a few large holidays and whatnot, the existing condition that's there presents an enormous safety component, especially because of the visual nature of it with the lack of striping and the pedestrian crossings through there. Those visual cues give, enhance the safety and the usability of that.
Road dieting is a very popular term. If you make people uncomfortable somewhat by limiting either the physical space or what looks like the space that they have available, they tend to adjust their speeds, slow down.
But don't we, and that's my question on the road adjustment, you talk about the speed going down. By doing the full adjustment and straightening it out, doesn't that give, won't that enhance my ability to speed?
It could, but it also decreases the potential consequences of bad behavior.
Yeah, it improves what we call the safety factor. As we design a roadway, even though it's being straightened out, it improves the safety factor, so there's more room for adjustment. There's more room for recovery is the term that gets used. And so it does introduce an opportunity for increased speeds along there, and that would increase your revenue on the enforcement side of things, just as a joke. But anyway, anyway, so, but it does improve the safety factor component along there. Where the roadway configuration, the way that it is, there's a very narrow safety factor component. There's little room for recovery and adjustment. Even though the speeds will increase, we've increased and improved the ability for cars to recover. And so it has a bigger tolerance for those in that configuration.
Just one question, and I don't want to get hung up on it, so I really don't. Why did you put this on this side and not this side and combine it with the sidewalk on that other side? Because of the topography of this side, it makes this project extremely difficult, extremely expensive. Everything from here, all of it would have to be filled and put in. And to me, moving that road just doubles the expense. And I'm just trying to figure out why it is couldn't just be on that side combined with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And just widen it on the one side and not have to go so far into the south and create all those costs.
Yeah.
It certainly could. So what you're looking at here is probably what you would call like a twenty to thirty percent design. This is all very conceptual.
You're done.
So some of the reasons, there's pros and cons for both. Cost is certainly increased.
I just familiar with the road, knowing anything you take to the south is going to double, triple, quadruple.
Yeah.
Some of the things on the north side of the road is, you know, that would certainly have more impacts on existing properties, like a homeowner's front yard. Hey, we're going to come in, your park strip's gone, whatever, trees and fencing that might be out there, there's going to be a greater impact. But it's a question of, hey, let's move this thing forward.
If you move that road farthest to south, you're saying you're trying to keep our water line in the south, that water line will be sitting on top of the field. And water line on a field, to me, would be about the scariest things, basically, if it's a main feed to the west, but that's, you guys are the experts now.
We've considered a lot of those components, and you're right, that roadway realignment, that section alone's approximately six million dollars of that cost, and so it's significant. When we consider the option of having the trail on the north side of the road, as Josh had mentioned, the impact to the residents and your right-of-way acquisition through there. And then the trail, it's difficult to have the trail cross from one side of the road to the other, because then we introduce conflict between pedestrians and vehicles. And so again, this is the best, easiest, long-term solution, but it doesn't, like Josh said, this is a twenty, thirty percent design in consideration. As we get further down the road with the priorities, we will consider options of shifting those. And can we mitigate the risks that are created by crossing the trail from one side to the other? But part of this recommendation here was to mitigate or minimize the right-of-way cost impacts, the property acquisitions that might be needed and that type of stuff. So those are very real concerns.
And that's what I'm trying to figure out. We have a right-of-way. If all you're talking about is widening the sidewalk on the north side and then into the park strips, sure, what property acquisitions would we have to do?
So keeping it within the right-of-way is one option. One of the concerns that we have is you've got a multi-use trail where you have joggers, bikers, walkers, that type of stuff. We now have dozens of conflict points coming out of those driveways. Whereas keeping it on the south side of the road, we're enhancing a safety component of that trail as well. So those are definitely very real concerns that need to be considered. And that's part of the reason why we're here is to understand the priorities.
That's exactly what we're looking for, that kind of input, those kinds of questions from council. Because what you're seeing here, this is a really good example. This is not us saying, this is what Public Works wants to and needs to do. This is us saying, cars heading westbound as they come down the hill here. If you drive up there, you'll see a large boulder right here, and that resident has placed that boulder there to keep vehicles out of his yard. So like I said, about six to twelve times a winter, vehicles come down here and almost all of them hit that boulder. So we go out, we reposition the boulder for that property owner. And last year, we had a situation, a car hit the boulder, got that cleared. And as soon as that was cleared, another car hit the boulder. As we're clearing that, that car had actually come and hit a power pole. And while the power cruiser out there trying to fix that pole, another car comes and almost hits the power crew. So to us, you know, we had a fatality, you know, four to five years ago, where high rate of speed coming downhill, not in the winter, loses control here on the tight turn and ends up in the front yard of this home there, again, with a fatality. So to us, this is exactly what we're looking for from council is, if we wanted to try and reduce, maybe not totally eliminate, the issues with traffic and collisions, this is how we could do it, but it's going to have a massive cost impact. There's other considerations, but you know, is that something council wants to include as we continue with looking at Crestwood? Is that something where we identify in that list of priorities, you know, let's maybe eliminate this or we change it to decrease the cost or the impact?
And we did take a look at other scenarios through here of not just a straight through, but let's, can we adjust the curve slightly to improve the safety nature, or maybe just a little bit more? And so we could do incremental shifts through there. And there's both a horizontal curve issue that they were talking about, but then there's the vertical curve. As Josh was talking about the fatality from a few years ago that was not in the wintertime. Because of the vertical nature of that curve and cars coming down, then trying to navigate the horizontal curve through there, they're not able to control, especially those high rates of speed. And so, you know, there's a vertical component, the up and down portion, and then there's the left and right portion. And each of those, again, we can take a very modular approach to some of those of what's the balance of spending the dollars and solving the problems?
Can we reduce the speed and increase the tickets?
Well, that's what I was going to say. Has there been any other options brought to the table as far as just like, I mean, obviously, because we're talking twenty-twenty-nine on this, like signs, bumps, you know, I mean, I know that, I know we can't do bumps because of the clouds necessarily, but there seems like there's got to be, or like.
So we've had an increased amount of focus from staff in this area, both leading up to that fatality and since Crestwood is one of our number-one focuses, you know, in the winter when it snows. Crestwood is number one. Get it clear, keep it clear.
Can I break in, Josh? Sorry, is it okay if I break in when you're done with your comment?
Yeah, no, you can break in now.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were done. I just, before we get too far down the line, you know, we live right over there, you know that. And it's just, even when you're driving safely, especially in the winter, that road is a nightmare. There's, I mean, I've driven up there and I've seen people get stuck going at a reasonable rate of speed. It's not, it's not something where I would feel comfortable saying, well, let's see, you know, what we could do that would be less or whatever. Like for me, you know, I haven't looked at the modular sheet, but for me, this area is like a super-high priority. And not just because I run there every day, but because tons of people run there every day, tons of people bike there, kids walk to school on there. It's a huge area of traffic, and even when you're driving safely, it can be a major hazard. We're hearing, like you've said, police showing up there all the time, you know, and especially with that fatality. It's a big problem, and even though I haven't seen, you know, the modular thing of, hey, maybe we could take this out, just my gut reaction on this is absolutely do what it takes to make it into a safe roadway. And, you know, if we can connect the connectivity, you know, as far as active transportation, great. But safety is a huge priority there because it's just such a weird thing. Anyway, sorry, thanks.
No, thank you. That's perfect. As we talk about Crestwood more, we've increased police patrols in this area. We've added additional signage, kind of giving drivers that might not be familiar with the area advanced warning that, hey, there's a downhill curve coming up ahead. We've added blinking lights to help kind of bring additional focus into what's coming up ahead. And those are all good things. But John, as you pointed out, as we worked with police and fire, we've essentially taken a position that, to maximize their response time, we don't, unless it's like the Burton Lane roundabout, you have to be going fifteen miles an hour to go through there. We felt comfortable for that reason, putting in kind of a raised crosswalk through there. On a roadway here, to keep police cruisers and fire trucks from going airborne or losing control, we'd probably never want to see something like a speed hub in that area. But to Abby's point, you know, as we continue the design and we receive input, this is kind of a maximum.
What is the grade here?
I think it's under ten.
It's under ten, which we allow ten percent.
So it's actually eleven, sorry.
It's eleven percent. Do we allow it to twelve percent? Is that what we allow right now, is up to twelve percent?
So on a road like this, new roads are ten percent max. There's residential roads, like local streets are allowed to go up to twelve or something like fourteen, maybe?
Eight and ten.
Oh, maybe.
Typical eight and ten is a standard, usually across the state.
Oh, that's right.
And typical eight, ten is a standard, and that's actually been a big part of this discussion as well is, is how can the staff implement the safety components and what does that do to ordinances? What does that do to design standards? And how can we work to improve and refine those to continue to provide a manageable solution, a manageable standard moving forward?
And I think kind of what I'm hearing is we do want to see what we can do to make significant improvements here. Maybe coming back from what we're showing there and continuing to evaluate alternatives that do the same thing, maybe to a different degree, but balancing that with impacts and costs.
Josh, if we chose from our menu here and said, based upon what we're hearing, water and realignment sound like major priorities, what has to happen with those that absolutely has to happen at the same time? Sewer?
So, yeah, if we were to focus on water and sewer, that would include the.
For water and roadway realignment, what has to happen?
Yeah, so your roadway realignment would include with your water, your sewer, your full-depth pavement would be included through there. With that roadway realignment, and you're roughly at about sixteen million with those elements.
So water, sewer.
Water, sewer, full-depth pavement, and road realignment.
So what?
So that doesn't count for the trail. That doesn't count for those things.
So if we didn't realign it, we just replaced it, what are you talking, that's what we want to know. Sixteen million to eight million, to me, realigning a road for eight million dollars is a burden to me, but.
If with your water, your sewer, and your full-depth pavement, you're roughly twelve million.
So it's probably more.
Could the city put a, I don't know, a cement block there or, I don't know, something there to kind of help?
I think there's certainly options that we can look at to kind of massage in between the two extremes of, hey, do we just leave as is, or hey, do we completely straighten this out? And again, this is us not saying, this is what has to happen. We're here for this very reason of, we need to understand, we have kind of the things that we would consider priorities and must-haves, but we need that from council as well as, what do you see as priorities and the needs as you talk with the community and yourselves as council members?
And this is great feedback for us as engineers. It's very easy for engineers stereotypically to get tunnel vision and say, oh, this is the best way to solve it, regardless of the cost. We need to be sensitive to costs, and so understanding the perspectives of what's your priorities and what's important to you, then how can we balance those and present an achievable solution? So this is extremely.
Because you go, you know, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking off-center fire station, blah, 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 blah. And so as you, you know, so what's your, you know, and you talk about the water, when you talk about the whole city, Two Hundred North and Crestwood, what's your drop dead date for doing something with the water? I mean, and I'm asking you to, you have no idea, but.
To us, we consider drop dead, like, let's do it as soon as possible, just so that we can account for the unknown of the future. The sooner it's done, the sooner we aren't as stressed about.
You're not a worry.
Yeah, the great earthquake coming and severing those lines.
I think there are much bigger problems when that comes.
I think the real takeaway today, I don't know, is Crestwood is a good example of how do we property scale projects to fit with what the council expects and fits within the budget. And so we don't expect an answer today, but this is a classic example of how we property scale projects. You know, Crestwood may be one, there may be another one just like this.
Well, it might be that. You go back to your Burton Lane, you know, that's your gold standard. So what's your gold standard on this? This seems like a platinum.
Yeah, that's what you're probably looking at. Like if we maximized safety and we're not as much looking at the cost or other factors, just, hey, what is the best from a safety and efficiency standpoint? That's what you're looking at here. So then the question is, we've got max, what do we maybe kind of back ourselves to?
And again, the priorities, when we talk about a safety and compliance and amenities and aesthetics, all of those are priorities within your group, within the council, right, of how do we balance those requirements? We can bend that roadway in a little bit and not achieve the exact safety standards that maybe we should, but it improves what's there. And it's the best approach we can have now, knowing that we'll have to solve it again in the future to enhance that. So this is the priorities, as he was saying, you know, the takeaway here is that this is a great example of how projects won't get smaller and projects won't get cheaper. And what can the city and the council do to prioritize for staff to say? Um and what can the city and the council do to prioritize for staff to say, safety is our number one priority, solve it at all costs. But then knowing that that number is very high, right? Or how do we balance this and prioritize aging infrastructure and then amenities such as the trail? This is exactly what we're hoping to hear, uh get some direction from from you guys on it. What's your priorities and how do you want us to balance?
If I be honest, from listening to you and what I see is the, you know, everybody wants root beer in the drinking fountain. You know, and that that'd be the greatest wish list.
Sure.
But I see the water lines is the issue.
Yeah.
And and to me, a a water line replacement would be their pri- priority at this point. Because that's the water feed for all of the residents of, from that point always. A lot of this other stuff, I feel like could be incrementally done at different phases. But to me, the focus would be the water line, if that's where you're concerned, because the water line was driving you to want to do this, it sounds like.
Right.
Yeah, so the additional questions that I'd kind of put in your mind and and if you have, you know, I think we're. We're to the point where we can kind of move on, but just a couple of additional questions for council. Uh we've talked about kind of an active transportation component, regionally, that's a huge focus. Abbott, you know, any thoughts or input or feedback from council on active transportation? Uh the active transportation that the city council adopted in twenty fifteen. Uh calls for dedicated bike lanes on uh Crestwood. And that that would be an active transportation consideration. You could have those dedicated bike lanes, uh and you could have sidewalk on both sides. Uh but there's right of way constraints and issues and concerns. There's travel lanes and road widths, shoulder space on the road itself. You know, if we did dedicated bike lanes, I think we lose shoulder parking ability.
And to add to that, as some of those components, as you consider some of those components, active transportation in particular. If the city says, well, we need to provide an act or we want to provide an active transportation component to this roadway. It actually opens the door for more funding sources that could help offset the cost. And so balancing some of those of saying, well, the trail may not be my highest priority, but by adding it, we can garner a million dollars worth of funding. And our project is only seven hundred and fifty thousand that can then help offset, but then the trail may trigger widening the road or realigning the road. Or or how do we do that? And so balancing those things, again, understanding those priorities, but knowing that things like active transportation, improving the safety. Those open up more funding grant dollars, uh access to some of those programs.
Yeah, is there is there any input or or feedback feeling from the council?
It looks like Abby wants to speak.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, uh thanks. I think of as far as active transportation goes, um you know, I've had my eye on Crestwood as. As an east-west active transportation type thing, and we talked about it at the most recent WFRC uh meeting. And they seemed pretty interested in in a possible idea there, but I think in any aspect of this, safety wise or active transportation, we need to be. I mean, obviously, we need to consider the budget because that's what we have to work within, but I think we need to be a little bit more forward thinking. Like if we look at, I mean, just an example, I know we all get tired of hearing about Farmington's main street. But someone thirty, forty, however many years ago, thought we should line this street with trees. And I'm not saying we have to line Crestwood with trees, but someone thought forward to the future of the aesthetics of that street. And you know, that's what everyone thinks of when they see Farmington, and I think we need to have the same kind of forethought and just say. You know, what do we really want to give our residents on this street? I think putting active transportation there would be a benefit to the residents healthwise, but also safety wise. Um you know, I spoke to those residents with the fatality and and the man who put the rock in his front yard. Came out and had to hold that person while he died, and I just don't think any kind of compromise in safety. On that street is acceptable to me. Um but we were talking about active transportation, and I think active transportation is another important key component to the safety there. So at least for me, and you know, if everyone else is different, that's fine. But for me, I think it'd be uh worthwhile to look into what we can do uh trail wise there.
As far as funds, can, are you allowed to submit for funds for active transportation or those types of things? And then make decisions based off of that? So like if we're talking doing a project in twenty twenty nine. And you apply, can you apply for a grant with like, say, these drawings or whatever and say, you know? And if the grant doesn't come through, then you know, like, okay, we aren't, we aren't gonna get any extra funds for active transportation. So let's change the, change the approach. Do you know what I like?
Can I answer that a little bit? So depending on the funding source will depend on when those dollars are available. Um typically, it's very rare, there's there's only a small handful of of applications or grant applications that are submitted in one year. And the funds are available in the next year. UDOT is is a great example. They typically uh by making an application in either their September or their December guideline or their uh deadlines, depending on the the grant. Their money is available the following year. Wasatch Front, they're funding projects five years out. And so their deadline for grants, the applications this year is in September, which is why we're in a really great spot to determine what grants we want to apply for. But if Wasatch Front grants, awards a grant for active transportation or otherwise, those funds are five years out. And so um we could do this and then depending on whether we get awarded that, those monies would not be available for five years. Which is part of why we've looked at the twenty nine uh dollar numbers, but the the funding.
That's what's smart about actually creating a carp launch thing is then you could go out and see. You know, you can use this to what you can see.
Sure.
Well, what what you get awarded and that could help determine.
And typically, your grants are going to be based around a a transportation, safety, compliance side of things. There's not as many grants for water lines and sewer lines and that type of stuff. So as you integrate active transportation and ADA compliance, safety components. Those are where you have the better opportunities for for structured grants.
Yeah, so we we currently have the UDOT grant with Crestwood, and that is us telling UDOT, we wanna look at active transportation components on this project. And that was why UDOT was willing to it. Here here you go. And we we applied for a WFRC, uh I think it was C-MAC uh grant for this. We weren't successful, but that doesn't mean that, hey, we've we've now got better information, that that a better, you know, kind of honed in design. Uh and and pursue those options and and on all of these large projects, regardless, two hundred north. Um and Hollow Signals, et cetera, we're pursuing grants. Uh WFRC, Davis County, and that there there's multiple options. And and we'll we'll kind of bird dog to death every option we can and then identify what's what's how to get up.
With all the issues with the water and like, uh you know, a couple of those uh areas that have the issues with the toxic water and stuff like that. I can't imagine that there are also water grants like for healthy water.
There 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 are some grants, but like Randy said, there are like few and tiny between compared to other opportunities.
Safety ones, okay.
And there there's like the this, the SRF, the State Revolving Loan Fund for Water, that's not a grant. Uh but it it's a essentially a below interest loan to assist with, otherwise we wouldn't be able to do this. So and 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 again, those are all options that we wanna consider as we're looking at this.
Right.
And you're kind of seeing the worst case scenario here, number wise, if that all came from the city coffers. Uh and and we'll kind of massage the design as well as continue to chase opportunities with this project. Because we have the luxury of some time in between now and construction.
And and I'm, I'm always very pragmatic and I'm used to doing budget drills with uh multiple projects. And this is one I would always see as falling below the line, you know, and not making it. Because, you know, because of the dollar value and there's enough other things in the city that I think as a whole for the city. And this is period speaking, that it's probably above the line. And so, I mean, I I I respect what Abby's saying on on the safety and all, you know, and the active transportation. But um I had, you know, I was in a car accident over off of Shepherd Lane, you know, the Shepherd Lane. Where you go down that little hill toward before you get to um to sunset, you know? And it was in the winter and I had slowed down to probably five, ten, ten miles per hour below the speed limit. And I still went across and got clipped. You know, the fact that if you get, if you're out of control, you're going too fast.
Yeah.
Regardless of what um the speed you're going, and you know, so I was sighted even though I was way below. Um you're never going to take human behavior out of the equation. If so, we're all gonna go back to walk.
And that's where we come back. Crestwood is a is a is just a an indicative situation that we happen to be analyzing at the moment. But there are several other conditions within the city, and you talk about updating general plans and master transportation plans, and it opens impact fee analysis. It opens up funding sources to solve those on a holistic nature for the community, for the the entire city. But this is a great uh case in point of saying, funding will likely always fall short of solving all of the problems. And so when it comes to that, how do we, what are the priorities? Safety, compliance, ADA, active transportation? What are those priorities that we should follow to help solve those?
Uh that as we wrap up Crestwood here and and kind of move on, Randy, you hit on something. Uh I I I hate saying this because it it sounds like, man, you're you're a heartless bureaucrat. Uh we will never be able to do everything. We we won't be able to a hundred percent fix every problem. And eliminate the risk of walking and driving, uh those are always gonna be there. I I hate saying that. Um but no matter what we do, there's always the risk component.
But it's your responsibility to lay it all out. And then and then.
Exactly.
And then it's up to us to say, priorities, and you know.
And 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 I think we've received invaluable feedback. I I appreciate that. I know we we went a little long, but that helps us a ton. And with that, Randy, I appreciate you coming all the way up here and being here and 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 I'll turn the time back over to you.
Well, thank you. I think that gives us a a good look at kind of what we're facing as we look at the budget each year. The next hour or so, we wanna wanna dial in a little bit and look at roads. So I have a stormwater independently. And so let's start with roads, we'll dial in a little bit about how how we typically finance road projects. What if we were to give you a budget today, what that budget would look like? So real quickly, uh road fund is a special revenue fund, and there are three sources of primary sources of revenue that come in. We have Class C road money, which is gasoline tax. We have the road utility fee, and that's a utility fee that we charge to our our rate payers. And and the local option, active transportation tax, that's a sales tax that is charged. So if you look at the primary sources of revenue, um this is an actual column, six thirty twenty three. Uh this is our current budget and we have projected out twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven. So if you look at twenty five, uh still early, but that's the revenue we would project, about three point four million dollars. And those are the expenditures that we would budget for for twenty five.
Is that nine million the grant we got?
Yes, yeah. So anything highlighted here is outside funding. So maybe, Levi, you wanna talk about the expenditures a little bit?
Yeah, this just gives you an idea of the projects that Josh has put together in the timeline, the next three years. Um and how it how it relates to the fund balance at the bottom. So you can kind of see that's, you can think of that as our, you know, savings. And so as we've talked about the priorities, um that's how it would, if we were to go forward with the current projects. That you can see there in green, those are the capital projects, that's how it would affect fund balance. And then this this section here that's not green is really attempting to just the operations. You know, the maintenance cost, trying to.
But you're over.
Project those and and compare them with the capital and what's, how's that gonna affect the the bottom one going forward? And so you can see, we were just talking Crestwood, I assume that this is the kind of engineering costs for that. But so we we have four hundred and eighty thousand budget, current budget. And then with the upcoming budget, there's two hundred and fifty thousand there plugged in there to continue that discussion about Crestwood and engineering.
True. So so make the main focus.
Totally, we need to be consultants.
The the main focus would be. It would be the the major project over the next several years. Additionally, uh Mutton Hollow, uh it's on the two traffic lights, uh Maine and and Fairfield. And then also repaving between Angel and the West Davis Corridor. So if you're looking at, you know, twenty five, if we were to take a snapshot of what the budget would look like, we we think this is what the recommendation will be.
So the repave, I mean, seven hundred thousand is not gonna repave it, right? I mean, that's what.
Yeah, that that repaves just from Angel Street to West Davis Corridor and and re-stripes. Um the we will be working with the contractor that did the corridor on some cost sharing there.
Okay.
For that project, just from the impact of their hall traffic, uh the deterioration of the roadway there, so.
Will that be significant in terms of their contribution?
Um I I I think, I think we, as we've looked at it, we've been able to isolate like, all right, here's your travel lane that you used. Uh going west, here's the travel lane that you used going east, so we're we're probably like thirty percent, thirty five percent, maybe.
This uh connector road, eight million, it uh for twenty twenty four, is that the, from Sunset to. I mean, the wraparound tied in Angel, are we, but we're not planning on doing that, right? Like.
Oh, no, sorry, it's uh. Yeah, so not 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 the Angel, yeah, sorry. Does there, there is kind of a stub to the west that is Angel.
Right.
It's not gonna continue, but it's it's just that piece that we've built, the roundabout, going down past the sewer. Going from the overpass up into Farmington.
Right.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to the, I thought that it was set up so that we would have money to do that.
We 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 have money to uh pursue the right of way for it, but not money to build that portion. It as we had the owner of the Equestrian Center, now look at the rezone, and then we did that independent um evaluation, the appraisal. Of what we needed at the Equestrian Center. And I think it was like close to a million bucks just for a third of an acre.
Yeah.
Uh so what we said is, all right, we're gonna stop the project physically back here, we're gonna acquire the right of way. Uh and at some point in the future, this project would be.
I'm the general. I I thought the actual project made it all the way to five fifty west.
It does.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah, it it just doesn't wrap around to Angel itself.
I mean, it yeah, it does make it to five.
Five fifty.
Okay, so with this current outline, are there any concerns? I mean, I I think this shows that we have a pretty good fund balance, and it takes a dip in twenty five with these two big projects. Two hundred north and the Mutton Hollow.
Yeah.
But then you can see it it'll build back up a little bit the next couple of years with the current rejection.
That's a slow build up.
Yeah, we we do take a big hit. Are there any concerns with like what we have put in for the next budget currently?
Only thing that I would say is there is currently a bill in there right now. That says that all these road impact fees have to sunset in twenty twenty five, and you have to do a whole new fee study. And name your projects and the amount of money that you can collect, and I think it's gonna pass, don't you?
It it will pass, um and I've asked Karen Pierce, and she's a bill sponsor, uh how does this impact people, cities with current road fees? And she said she feels like, um based upon the data, we will be able to charge more than we're currently charging. Because I said, that that's our big concern, is we already have it being placed, or we'll lose money.
But you're going to have to have the projects, that's the difference. You collected the money.
Correct.
Yeah, that's.
And you have to redo it every ten years. That's the nice thing, is is we saved, you know, probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars on having Cody and Dexter. Put together what we would consider the beginning of our master plan internally, uh so we do have those for the next twenty to thirty years.
So my my only question, Levi, you know, and then go probably to Josh and so, you know. So we've talked about widen two hundred north and the repave Mutton Hollow, that's been a priority. You know, but then we talk Crestwood and the water. Should one supplant the other? And I just, I just.
Just looking at the road fund.
It's just, it's just the road, but I mean, okay.
Cause he's gonna, I think what he's saying is when they do the widening and repaving of two hundred north, they're gonna also do the.
The water's in there, the water's happening there, and that's important.
Exactly.
I I.
So when you look at water, we'll see that.
Okay.
And then at the end, we'll summarize.
Okay, then I'll 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 hold. Okay, then I'll 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 hold. I I don't have a, I don't have a problem. I was right where you were.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think an important thing to to look at as well is the amount we're allocating for just crack seating and silconing. And, you know, both, there aren't, they aren't capital expenses, but they're.
They're expenses. Well, you just drive down, all of a sudden, there's a a big hole in in Main Street, right near the two hundred north light.
You know, so that's where. The money come from to fix those sorts of things.
Yeah. You have to.
Okay, any, any questions on that? That's kind of what we think the budget will look like as you see that. And and I think our intent today is is to kind of check off these boxes and then you'll see these again, of course. At least a couple of times.
And hopefully we'll remember that we saw them a couple of times.
They will turn this into the water fund.
Okay. Now, you have to kind of change your your way of thinking a little bit because the accounting is different because it's more fluid. It's enterprise accounting, so it's a fluid based with capitalization and depreciation.
And I think the just the whole reason for that is. They view these funds, water, power, as standalone businesses. And so they want to portray the number comparable to a business. And so it's a different way of accounting. It's not, it's not as simple as the general fund or road fund where it's it's pretty much just cat cash basis. The money coming in, the money coming out. It starts to, um, add depreciation and spreading some of those large capital costs. But go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, no, you didn't.
So in order to help make sense of things is. The revenues coming in for water projects are through utility fees. So water sales, uh, last year were about three point six million dollars. So with that, three point six, you've gotta pay for all your operating costs. You've gotta pay for, um. Any, uh, capital projects you do, so everything, uh, that three point six million dollar. So there are personnel services, there's, uh, you have to buy water from Weber Basin Water. There's maintenance and operations. There's general fund services, providing admin, IT and fleet. And then this line item right here is the accounting line item depreciation. That is the component, it's not cash. But it goes into your financial statements. So for example, you may spend a million dollars on a capital expense. But you take that million dollars and say, what's the life of that project? So if it's a ten year life, you're only getting charged the expenses a hundred thousand dollars for that one year. Does that? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
But so these show deficits, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I was to take this fictitious number and drop it by fourteen thousand or or sixty four thousand. Then that would be a zero. Cause that's technically really a fictitious number. It's a depreciation number, but it's a number you're giving it a percent, right? Or what?
It's a, it's a particular, I think, not fictitious, but it's a number on the operating statement, but you have to look at in combination with the cash flow statement.
Yeah.
Well, so what this would tell you is if you were on a cash basis here, you would have about eight hundred thousand dollars. To go towards capital.
But because of depreciation, you you don't.
No, I think you do. You're gaining, you're gaining it. Okay, let me see if I understand this correctly. You're saying like you put in a, I'm gonna use tense. So you put in a hundred thousand dollar project, right? And you say it's gonna last us ten years. So then you basically acquire enough money over the next ten years so that when you get to the tenth year, you can pay to replace it?
No.
Okay, now I don't understand.
You just charge your statement, your operating statement, ten thousand a year. But then you gotta look at the cash as well.
I I think the takeaway from this slide.
Okay, so you just use your savings to pay for over ten years, is all you're saying. So, but why does it increase?
You use it the first year because you spent a million dollars upfront.
Okay.
But you only charge the operating statement a portion of that expense.
The purpose of this operating, uh, revenue and expenses and income is to help you understand. What are the op, the base operating income and expenses for that, for that fund only? And so taking out the the large one time expenses and the and the grant funding. What are just the base operations and how does that compare year to year? And 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 outside funding sources. And so if you just look at the water fund. From the base revenue it brings in and the operating expenses, it's operating at a loss. Which would indicate that it it needs outside help year to year to to break even. And that's all, so that's all this is really trying to to give you an idea of the financial health of the water fund. But we just want, it is a little, it can be misleading. It has some accounting.
So if I look, if I looked at this for ten years or, you know, a longer period of time, is this telling me that, um. We need to increase our fees?
I think it warrants a discussion. I think it's it's telling you that.
And and twenty one's fine, but then you go to the to the loss. And so it 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 really seems to fluctuate quite a bit.
It's an indicator that the water fund and its base core operations is starting to be reliant on outside funding year to year to stay. That's all it's really saying.
Well, I I take it to one other thing. If if we're strictly dollars in, dollars out. If you've got three point six million dollars, you've got, you've got these expenses fixed.
Yeah.
That leaves you with eight hundred thousand towards capital projects.
So give me one more try on this thing. So is that eight hundred and ten and seven seventy six and six fifty seven, is that going into somewhere else to pay back the things you did? I'm so freaking confused with this. I'm sorry.
Why don't we?
It's just number.
But what, where does it go?
Well, that represents the current year portion of all the past projects we've done. That we spent five million dollars ten years ago and that five money got spread out to the future years. That's.
Okay, so then it's.
That's the current year cost.
But so when you spend the five, when you spend the five million dollars, that five million had to come from some coffer. Where is that coffer? That's what I'm saying. That eight ten is going back to that coffer. Is that correct?
Let's go to the next slide.
This is more what you're talking about. This is, so that bottom section is the cash flows. And it's just a different way of looking at it. Like, we're not trying to confuse you with the can. We're just trying to help give you the understanding. Mike, Mike disagrees. This is, hopefully this is better. So cash flow statement at the bottom, that's the cash in, cash out last year. So last year, one point six million was how much net decrease in cash we spent. And this is the projects we spent it on.
So you spent one point five million dollars cash in twenty three. But you only expensed eight hundred thousand dollars. So you have to look at in combination the operating statement with the cash flow statement. So your cash reduced by one point six million dollars last year.
But that could have to do with how many projects you did. And that's a fluctuating number.
Absolutely. But but the key is, if you do too many projects, then you're running out of cash.
Sure.
Which this is telling me that.
You're gonna do.
You know, here's what we have, current twenty four. Here's what we're projecting twenty five, we're gonna suggest that we fund that. But even with that, if you look at these projects, you're gonna be at a cash deficit in two years.
So we brought in three point six million. But we spent, this doesn't include the cost, this doesn't include the cost for personnel services.
It does, that's all, so.
That's what you're operating.
For example, that's pretty close to a hundred thousand dollar number.
If you add back the depreciation.
So if you were to say, um, no depreciation, you made eight hundred thousand dollars. But then you gotta go back and say, well, there were some other expenses here too. And that reduced my cash.
I get what you're doing. You're showing it because it's based on a percentage, why does it show that you are losing money? Because you, but in reality, you still have about seven hundred thousand extra dollars.
Okay, I guess.
Because the cash goes out.
Well, it goes out to the next year.
No, no, that was in twenty three. So in twenty three, you made eight hundred thousand dollars. And we. On an operating basis, but then you also had cash going out in these areas.
You can see we invested quite a bit in in capital last year. And so we.
It's a fluctuating.
Right, like you said.
Yeah, and so if you reduce your projects, your cash is.
Yeah, and that's, so that's kind of helping you projecting out the projects we have.
Okay.
Ignoring the accountings.
And as you said, we're gonna go down next year, but if we keep going and we don't do this, then you'll see the cash builds back up. Not possibly.
The water fund, you can see the cash, we have about three and a half million, pretty healthy. But if we, it really is that tank in twenty twenty seven. It's kind of where we dip into the negative and we might need to start thinking about how to fund that.
Twenty five budget looks like we think it's gonna look. Your cash is gonna be pretty close to where it was. So twenty five's gonna be okay. It's these future projects that give us concern.
The bigger projects.
Are there grants or potential outside funding for those?
Probably limited, but we will certainly look at those.
That's like Josh was saying, water projects are pretty hard to get.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I think in seven years, I've I've been able to use outside funding on one project.
Okay, so it's, uh, yeah.
We're gonna get, yeah, I think on the water costs for secondary water and then regular water, it's just gonna get expensive. Should've gone into the water business.
I can't retire her.
So that one point four million is highlighted. I, that's potentially for the AR, ARPA money.
Correct. Yeah, we we've decided to to cancel two projects that. Man, these would be awesome to automate some things and be able to collect real time data on some things.
Okay.
But this fire came up on two hundred north. We continue to have leaks, UDOT's repaving it. And so we have canceled those other projects and we'll move those funds over to help put out the immediate fire that popped up.
So that one point four is gonna replace the water line four hundred west from Main Street?
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna replace two hundred north water line from four hundred west up to Main, yeah.
So so I think the question for the council is, this is our priority list. We're gonna spend on two hundred north water. We're gonna spend on the four hundred west to Main and we're gonna use ARPA monies.
This is outside funding, okay.
So that's not affecting the cash balance. It's just right now.
And we're gonna do a little bit of Crestwood water line. But that, that's going to be your priority list for the water fund. Thank you.
Still having a pretty healthy cash balance.
Now, obviously, this doesn't project other surprises that might pop up too. I mean, you just never knew.
Yeah, there's always the unknown.
Thousand cash now. Yeah.
Awesome.
I've got a lower pasture tank I can sell you for.
So you'd be able to to put all the walls up for my tank for two million. Be exciting.
Stormwater is presented the same way. Uh, we put it through utility, about one to two million dollars. You have standard operating expenses. Appreciation.
So why, go, can we go back? So I'm, so why do the personnel services jump? Why did they jump so much in, uh, in twenty three, you know, Orchard Ridge?
Well, and the, and the.
Really?
And the the pay increase.
Okay, okay. So the Orchard, Orchard Ridge, okay. All the, all the ba, all the babysitting.
Twelve, twelve weeks, we had two people twenty four seven.
That one ninety three of contractual services, a hundred and twenty five thousand of that is Orchard, related to Orchard Ridge specifically.
Okay.
So then you, but you said originally the seven ninety seven from the five forty four was Orchard Ridge too. So where is that? Why is that?
No, this is just the personnel increase.
Okay, so that was all the raises that we did.
That's the art of it.
Uh, it's a portion. The the larger part is the Orchard Ridge, uh, overtime.
Overtime, overtime.
This one was the pumping that we did.
Okay, okay, thanks.
No, that. So this was a little bit of an anomaly. This year.
Yeah.
But realistically, it's still down in the three hundred and fifty or probably three, four hundred thousand.
I would still indicate that you probably need to adjust rates.
Yeah.
What what percentage do you use to get that depreciation over?
We don't use a percentage. It's the actual cost of all the prior expenses spread out.
Over years.
And again, the whole reason for that is to just give you an idea of the year to year operations. So that you don't have these large fluctuations, right? Cause the, these numbers show big fluctuations. We spent two million this year and next year we didn't spend any. This is an attempt to try to smooth it out. Give you a good idea of how is this fund operating on a standalone basis and.
And it's not.
And it requires outside funding year to year.
Yeah, is that's outside funding come from the general fund?
Um, it hasn't.
A portion of it. Anyway, let's let's jump to this slide. This will help us talk about project and cash balance.
More presentation, uh, this is what we've spent in twenty three. This is our preliminary twenty five budget. We would spend web lane curb, web lanes, land drain. And then again, this is the wetland project and this is highlighted because that would be outside funding.
Is that the only reason that project would occur?
Money comes through when we do that project.
I have one random question, just curiosity. So the water fund, the personnel services are about a million dollars. And then the stormwater fund personnel services, I, well, I have that. Aren't, aren't these the same people?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so they're just, their parts of their salary are allocated to.
Yeah, Josh helps us identify how to allocate their time.
So there, there, there are some people that you'll say ninety five percent of them is gonna be stormwater. And some people, ninety five percent is gonna be water. Uh, there are some people, you know, me and Cody, we spend a lot of time with all of the departments. Some, yes, the the locators, you know, they're supporting multiple departments, so that.
It's like which charge number you're charging to.
Okay, I think the next slide summarizes everything as far as projects included in the budget. You can see what we've spent in twenty four. This is what we think twenty five is gonna look like. To our north. To our north again.
Yay, positive.
And this one potentially could be their place.
No, that's not a positive. That's, that's how, that's how much we need. Right?
Yeah, those are costs.
Oh. And that's how we end.
Although, although, and and the point, the point to that is how much that is outside funding. You know, so these are the, all the infrastructure projects. But I'm, you know, I'm seeing out of all of them, that's a bunch of money that is outside. So that's a.
So that twenty five column was, would be what the budget would, what we would present to you for this upcoming budget.
The eleven two.
Four across all the funds.
For public works, infrastructure. We'll have similar things just like this for for parks and power.
That's not in addition, that's just the budget that's presented.
So.
Not, not in addition to last year's budget.
So, so then my, my, okay, so this is what will be projected in the budget. Do we, and we really don't have any idea yet. How much we can afford.
Well, I think in this case, um, because they're enterprise funds, we we know what restricted monies. And the road funds are restricted, so in this.
Realistically, we do know, and this is forward because we can't afford it.
Yes, in this case, you're not competing with general fund.
Right, and that, that's where looking at the cash balance for just that fund gives you an idea of what you can afford.
Okay, the one point four, this is after, and that's after the, got it.
Yeah, but we look at the others, there might be, uh, so do we do this or do we do this? And they're both general fund expenses.
Okay.
I ask you, Levi, why?
I ask you Levi, why you don't eliminate the, you know, the, go back to that last, the last slide? Why you don't eliminate the eight and the?
The outside funding.
Yeah, the outside funding in, on this slide.
Uh, just to give you an, just so you know that they're happening, but.
Okay.
But.
Just on the other slides, you had them there, but they weren't part of the calculation, right?
Oh, you're talking the grand total.
Yeah.
It is part of the grand total.
It is part of the grand total here, so it might be, it might be easier for us to see like.
That it's really eight million dollars-ish.
Well, or that, that's close to the twenty six and twenty seven numbers, I guess. If you take out three point four, that's gonna be six, six point nine-ish.
Still a couple million more. Because you got that three million there that you don't have there. So if you, it's still gonna be like six, but it's gonna be just under eight.
Oh yeah, eight, yeah.
Yeah, and, and as time goes on, I'm sure the columns in twenty six and twenty seven.
Will increase.
Will get it.
They're gonna fill up, yeah.
We, we just know there's some that you start now, you've gotta finish them out, like the two hundred north.
So like on the twenty five one where it talks about the Mutton Hall repaving installed two traffic signals? That's three million? Can we not get a grant for the Main Street traffic signal?
Uh, yeah, we, we do have grant funding that's reimbursement, it's still like a year and a half, two years out.
So why wouldn't you include that as not being a part of that cost? Maybe just a miscommunication, so is that gonna?
Yeah, but the, the only reason I didn't put that there is it's two years before we are eligible for the reimbursement. Yeah, it's not coming in right now, we're paying for it internally.
You could do depreciation on the other way.
That's right.
Hey, what are we talking?
I still don't understand what depreciation means, but sure.
I don't either, I don't get it.
I, I was in business school for two and a half months until I took an accounting class and then dropped out. Transferred from the university.
We apologize, you would have to be in the same room as two accounting nerds.
Like, it's so simple!
Well, that's, yeah, that's why we tried to show you the cash, cause we, we understand that's more intuitive than, than.
Okay.
So.
Well, and I think, and I think we appreciate you starting with public works first because it is a separate fund balance and, and we're not have, we don't really talk about moving money as much, it's really what. And so it's a little more straightforward. Just wait. Okay.
Um, so we, thank you for sitting through this and, um, does Abby have any comments? Is she still?
She's still there.
I'm still here. Uh, no, I think I'm struggling to grasp it just as much as you guys are, so I don't think I could make an intelligent comment, but appreciate all the effort that's gone in.
Intelligent comments, Abby, we appreciate everything that you contribute.
You sat through all our non-intelligent.
Right. Thank you, appreciate you breaking it down. And I really love the approach of looking at different, different, um, departments each time because then it gives us time to really digest it, ask better questions later.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the council. Uh, when I had my mental breakdown that Cody Dicks, who saved me with, we went to Dean and Jason and just like, man, I have no idea what we're gonna do. And, and Dean was like, you know what, let's, let's have this kind of a work session and this, this helps me a ton and I can't say thank you enough for the amount of work and effort they put in and stuff. That's all I'm saying to everybody.
Well, and I think.
So March first will be our next meeting on the project, we'll build parks and, and buildings and things.
So we're not doing one in two weeks?
Well, you're a normal council meeting.
But normal, and on Friday. So the next, so the next.
Friday, March first.
Okay, so we're not another Friday in February.
And I believe, and we sent out those calendar invites already, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, that's my other calendar. I'm trying to think of what question they have for you, so. So if you were, you know, you go back to what keeps you up at night? Is it, it's water more than anything?
Easily.
So let me, uh, so if you got subdivisions that are only twenty years old, where the infrastructure's already falling apart on water? Why didn't twenty years ago, when they had maybe soil samples and, you know, these high iron? Did we not put, did the developers not put in better infrastructure?
I think, I think you've had a lot of advancements since that time we've done as we've gone in and we've updated our standards. I think the last time they were updated was like the early nineties. And then four or so years ago, we updated the standards and, and did things like, hey, uh, bolts on water lines now need to be either stainless steel or epoxy coated. And instead of ductile iron pipe that is prone to corrosion, we're requiring plastic C nine hundred everywhere that isn't susceptible to, to ferric soils. So I think a lot of that is, you know, older kind of standards and construction technologies.
Just keeps increasing, yeah. Okay, so what if I go over here, you know, just over here in East Kaysville, all these homes that are, you know, sixty, fifty, sixty, seventy years old, what are they using?
Uh, I, I think you see different soil types, I think, uh, you're, you're using things like asbestos concrete, which is great in a lot of ways. Uh, but it, it, it doesn't corrode, it doesn't erode, but it is.
Leaks out and you get the asbestos.
Yeah, luck, luckily that's not the concern. It, it's more so, uh, it's great when it's encapsulated in soil and it's under pressure internally. But if contractor exposes that, accidentally hits it, it explodes and it, the cracks just run down the pipe.
Really?
Yeah, so.
Okay, alright. So the issues we're having are, are, are you seeing it over on the west side?
West, west side and east side.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, more of the ferric soil issues are on the west side. Water tables higher, uh, the, the soil, uh, composition is quite a bit different. Uh, you, you start to see more, more sands and clays up here. You're dealing with loans and, and deposits from Lake Bonneville, I bet, who knows down there, so.
Okay.
Well, you learn things as you go, like this old part you're talking about, a lot of it's cast iron, which has lead joints. You've heard of Flint, Michigan and the water back there?
Yeah.
I mean, that's forty five years after them lines were installed and you're gonna start seeing that come down the pipe here is we have to start replacing all these lead joint pipes and cast iron lines and lead services, so. Unfortunately, it takes a while before you figure out, that pipe was not good.
Well, then you just gotta go figure out, how do I fiscally go in and do this work?
And then, and that is gonna be difficult. The federal government is getting more restrictive every year with, at the municipal water suppliers. Here's the three additional there's that you gotta start jumping through and this. Lead, lead joints, lead service lines, lead pipes. Uh, or, or something that they're starting to, we want you to inventory all of your underground pipes, which is incredibly easy to do. We're just, go find out what's underground. We have to submit that.
It's easy to say.
Yeah.
It's overnight.
And then the federal government will come back here within the next five or so years and likely tell cities, you have this amount of time to.
Pass for something stupid.
So Cody, when Kaysville was experiencing a massive amount of burn and we were adamantly telling people to use class fifty one ductile iron pipe, is that gonna haunt us?
Yes.
Great.
Those twenty year old subdivisions that he's referring to are all ductile iron pipes.
I know, I mean, not with all the city would allow anybody to use a class fifty one ductile iron.
And the, you know, that's one of those unfortunate things, you don't know, the day you're putting it in, you find out ten years, twenty years, cast iron forty years down the road, that, that was a big mistake.
What are we requiring now?
Yeah, it's C nine hundred, it's a plastic pipe. And, but, you know, it's certainly not bulletproof and.
It was available back then, but nobody would let anybody use it. Class fifty one duct fire was the.
Chats me out.
Chats me out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I hear they're gonna have a lot of those issues in Selma County.
Uh, you know what, I'm sure they are.
Let's hope they do.
Hours and hours.
He's laughing at us, cause they don't do anything with drinking water.
They don't, they don't.
They just drink beer.
Service districts for water. If Cody can remember this, I remember digging a water line up over here that was wood with wire.
I think he's have.
Yeah, I've got a, a piece in my office.
Same, we have some wooden gas lines.
No, they, you know, this is serious.
My sister-in-law lives on Phillips and when they had a water break, her house is like a hundred plus years old. It, the, the pipes were wrapped with, not toilet paper, but paper. They were wrapped with paper all the way to the street, her sewer line. It was wrapped with, yeah, I, it was scary.
There's no wind.
Yeah, it was crazy, it was just layers and layers.
What kind of paper?
I don't know what kind of paper, not.
Charmin.
Yeah, it was crazy.
What are those, when you, paper mache, maybe it was paper mache.
It was kind of like that, it was just some sort of a paper composite.
That's crazy.
You ready to close the meeting?
Oh, yes. We need a vote? Thank you for attending, our meeting's over. Meeting is adjourned, okay.